Hey all. Today we got a city council meeting at the city of Mustang. And we're gonna address the fees. And some of our constitutional rights that the police seem to think that they can violate. So, only got a few minutes. I can't see my screen. Right now, so give me a few minutes until I get in there. And I'm gonna be recording this whole event. Because it's my right. Take all my documentation and everything. And we'll just address the city council.
They need to know the significance of the issues homeowners are experiencing.
Right, but we're gonna request, he said request for the city manager to come out and have a similar meeting that charity had with us.
Huh? Oh.
And he said that.
Well, I can't, I don't wanna agree with it. I wouldn't say anything about it.
I'm gonna introduce myself and see how you guys, people are telling you what you can or can't do. You're welcome to, to address the council. I just want you all to, I'm Jess, I'm the mayor. I just want you all to understand that. We can listen, we cannot respond, we cannot do a plan of action. That is crap you can't do because it's not on the agenda. But don't in any way feel like you can't get up and address the council.
You wanna do?
Well, do we have, do we have to fill out something to be able to address the council?
We don't do that.
Okay.
You'll be, you'll be restricted to.
Three minutes?
To three minutes.
Okay.
Now, I'm gonna be quite honest with you, I'm not gonna put the timer on it. If somebody gets really excited and is hitting some good points, I'm not gonna tell you to shut up and sit down. I want you to, 'cause I've been, I have sat exactly where you guys are at and I've addressed the council before years ago. And I don't want you to think that you can't address the council.
Here's the problem. Yeah, I'm a little dumb down by what Terry Jones told you, because I've told you this before as well. We've got residents along West Laura, and I don't know about all the issues on West David. I know about the issues on West Laura because my mom lived there and I have it in the house now. There's a whole row of people that can't use their toilets because their sewage, their laterals, and their septic tank fills up because of the groundwater. That, and that's caused by drainage issues.
This is an older addition, right? And you gotta understand something. You got, go ahead, I'll let you speak.
Okay, so when Kevin Pendry developed the Phoenix Court, the center portion of Walnut Manor, he took out water control terracing that directed water west to South Nils and east to Clear Springs Road to get rid of that water. Instead of it coming to south on lots on West Laura. He took that out. My dad.
Sneaking through, sorry. How are we doing?
My dad, how developer of Walnut Manor called the city to tell them what was going on. The city did nothing. And now, however many years later, I think that was probably about 10 years ago that Pendry developed that inner portion. We've been experiencing problems whenever we get these regular moderate to heavy rains like we have in the neighborhood. So.
It is very difficult, and your father's a developer, and obviously you have a little bit of construction background. It's very difficult, it's very difficult to, to all of a sudden.
They told me a couple weeks ago, if you lose three, you gotta wait until you're out to your fifty-five. And if that's the case, I'll wait till. They, so I'm gonna be there this Thursday. Not expecting that, but everybody else they can work time.
Good man.
Good evening. I'd like to call the U.S. Department of Defense, Mustang City Council. And tonight, to lead us in prayer and salute will be Vice Mayor Ryder. Please stand.
Salute my friend. In the name of the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This is great, Dad. Dear Father, we are so thankful to be a part of a community just like Mustang. And we are thankful for the opportunity to be able to come together and discuss the business and hear the citizens. And we ask that you let this meeting be a good meeting tonight and be respectful and pleasant and have a great.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Counselor Lee?
Oops.
Sorry, I have some teeples. Counselor Ryder?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Yeah.
Counselor McKenzie?
Here.
Counselor Sholen?
Here.
Mayor Schwender?
Here.
At this time, I ask that you please silence, turn off your cell phone, pagers, or any other kind of voice activated, noise pool. At this time, introduction of guests, hearing the citizens. Hearing citizens, if anybody that would like to approach the council on issues that are not on the agenda tonight. If you would, you're welcome to approach the council, state your name, your address, and your opponent.
Good evening, my name's David Mills. I'm a long time resident, uh, now it's Indiana. Long time resident of Mustang, I'm from a place here. I have, my mother passed a few years ago, and half her house is located in Walnut Manor. For a number of years, we've had some water control issues, some drainage issues. Part which can, can be resolved by clearing out, cleaning out the ditch, the drainage channels south of eighty ninth street. That cuts out to the Walnut Manor addition. And also, there's a water drainage easement in Walnut Manor itself that we'd like to get cleaned out. And I understand, I learned recently that there was an agreement between my dad and the city of Mustang. The city would maintain that, so I need to find out more information on that. I don't expect to get that tonight. I brought some information, I don't necessarily want to read it because I feel like it's all the other members here that want to visit. These issues started, I don't remember the exact year, it was when a different developer developed the inner portion of Walnut Manor addition. Put in a street that's named as Phoenix Court and built, built four, four or six houses in there. In the process of developing that, he took out the water control terracing that directed water west to off the South Nils Street, or South Nils Drive, and east to Clear Springs Road. And that, diverting that water kept all that water from getting those southern lots that are, that reside on West Laura Drive, which is the, the street that my home is on. So, we'd like to get some attention to this. Cleaning out the ditch lines and the water using a Band-Aid that would help probably get that water out of there. But at the same time, we need to look to see if there's something that could be done to divert that water back to its originally intended, how it was originally intended. And I believe that water control terracing is on the original plaque of Walnut Manor. So, anyways, that's, that's really what I'm here to talk about tonight. I know there's a number of residents of them along West Laura. And I understand now there's some issues for residents that live on West David Drive that are having issues. All those places are on septic. I know the properties on West Laura, the homeowners on West Laura already will have been able to use their toilets, do laundry, or things like that. And septic's are backed up. That, and I know some of you are thinking, well, we have law ready. And yeah, that happens periodically. But we never had these problems until the developer developed that inside portion of Walnut Manor and took out that water control terracing. And I don't know how many other residents appeared tonight that live on West Laura Drive. But I think they were saying the same thing, that that drainage did not exist years ago before that, that Phoenix Court, I should call it Phoenix Court, was developed. So, we'd like to get, you know, go through the steps to get some energy towards getting this problem resolved. I understand we're out there with people in Mustang handling water control issues. But this has been going on a long time. I contacted the city, and by the way, my father contacted the city of Mustang when the developer took out that water control terracing to let him know what was going on. The city did not do anything about it. And past forward to now, when we get these heavy rains, this is when we have these issues.
Now, I understand that the city manager should give you his card, right?
Have the city, you should have his card.
As I, as I said when I was out there with you, I'm gonna say to everyone who comes up here, please, 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 call the city manager tomorrow, Thursday or Friday. So we can come in and visit with them.
Alright.
At this point, that's where we need to start.
Okay. How do I find out about an agreement that exists between, at the time it was made with my dad, who was a developer in the neighborhood, and the city of Mustang, as far as keeping that water easement maintained? How do I find out about that?
Two things, one, that would be something you would ask the city manager or assistant city manager for research. But at the same time, I would think that, I mean, this is disrespectful. I would think your, your father had an agreement with the city, me and his smart man, he could have it somewhere.
I've, I've looked for my parents in the past, I have looked, I cannot find that. I personally did not know that agreement existed. It was Ben Trishabans who lives down on West David, I'm sorry, West Laura, told me that they did, that the city did find that agreement.
Was it with the property in Walnut Manor?
I'd like to interject, at this point, we really can't get into a discussion of this.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda.
Right.
This is just a public comment period, you're not the time to discuss.
Understood, understood.
So I'll be in touch.
Alright, thanks for making this up, I appreciate it, y'all, too. You bet.
Hi, I'm Holda. And I live on West David Drive, out in Walnut Manor. And I called the city about four or five years ago to report the excessive flooding that comes from Roseau up in White Gommet, and it comes down, and it just, it, it just, I have pictures. I have from everyone on David, pictures and lists of stuff that is doing to their personal property. And it to my personal property. In fact, I called probably over a month ago. Melissa did come out, and she looked at my property, and I told her what was going on. And since then, my swimming pool has popped out of the ground. It's going to be cost over about fifty thousand dollars to get the digs that I don't have. Otherwise, I'm gonna have an empty hole in my backyard. I'm gonna have to pay hell money. It's gonna cost me dead food in my house. That all the soil is washing away on the side of my house. I'll probably have computers in before tomorrow. Which is gonna be another high dollar expense. And this is happening through the whole neighborhood, not just mine, through the whole neighborhood. And I don't know if you want to read these, if you want to see the pictures. If you do, I'd gladly hand these over.
He's bringing his letter, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And a lot of the people in our neighborhood, they wanted to be here tonight, that they, I had texts after texts that they had funerals and everything else, but they didn't want me to tell you that, that they are very concerned. So, thank you for your time.
Please, please schedule a meeting with the city manager. Assistant city manager.
He has extra records.
Okay.
Please.
Hi, most of you guys don't know me. My name is Kenneth Gramps. I've been in the Mustang community about six years.
Your address, sir?
Pardon me?
Your address?
Uh, I actually now live just outside of Mustang, but I, all my shopping and everything is done here. I used to live right behind the fire station until I fell twenty-seven foot and broke my back and we had to relocate. So, but we still wanted to stay in the Mustang school so my daughter can graduate from Mustang High and everything. So, we just live right outside now, but still, oh. Oh, seventy-nine oh one South Council Road, number two seventy. Mr. Rooney knows me pretty good. And, but anyway, I'm here on a completely separate matter, and Mr. Rooney is aware of it. It's for the excessive fees that I'm being charged for open records requests. You guys are actually gonna vote on one of them tonight to reimburse me a small portion. But I'm still, I mean, I was charged three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-nine cents for seventeen discs plus six hours. A hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents for, for them to actually put them on a disc. And they put them on seventeen, seventeen separate discs, a video on each one, each disc. One disc had a total of fifty-six seconds on the whole disc. Another one, eleven minutes, thirty-one seconds, four minutes. I'm not gonna get into all of them, but all of it could have been put, basically, put on one disc instead of being put on several discs. And then, another open records request for fifty-two, one, a hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. And I got charged seven hours, seven hours, seven hours, seven hours for the, for research time and stuff. And when I've dealt with other municipalities, Oklahoma City Police Department, Blanchard Police Department, Purcell Police Department. Blanchard Police Department, they don't charge you anything for any body cam videos or dash cam videos. They just send you a link, you open the link, you download the videos, they're there. They don't charge you a dime. Didn't charge me a dime for the open records request for the call log, didn't, I mean, for none of it. I mean, they printed it up right there, handed it right to me. And they did that on the spot. It didn't wait, nothing. Oklahoma Police Department, for eight videos, they charged me four dollars for eight videos that were put on one customized disc that I gave cop, the original disc to Mr. Rooney. And they charged me four dollars. You guys are now charging twelve dollars for each disc right now based on what Mr. Rooney is telling me. And a disc, a fifty-pack disc is nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And, I mean, that's tax, tax, or taxpayers' money already anyway. I mean, we're buying those discs, that's not coming out of your guys' pocket. I'd like to see a better resolve and possibly a better reimbursement for the excessive fees I've been charged. And something else with the police department. When citizens are just riding in a vehicle, your police chief seems to think, and all police officers for, forever, seem to think that they have to get everybody's ID no matter what. And it's our, it's our Fourth Amendment right not to if we're not doing anything wrong. I mean, if we're not doing anything wrong, we shouldn't have to sit there and let you know who we are, what we're doing, why we're there. I mean, any of that, that's not, it's not anybody's business but our own. And I'd like to see something addressed with the police department about those issues. But I don't know how to go about getting it done. I've called several times and asked the chief to put a meeting on his schedule, and I don't get return phone calls or, it's three weeks later before I get a return phone call, and then he tells me, well, let me talk to the city manager or city attorney before I schedule a meeting. And it, I mean, they're there to serve the citizens, they should be serving the citizens. And it should be being done without trying to prevent me and do, charging excessive fees and stuff from requesting the information that should be public information at all time anyway. I mean, it's there for the public, we should have access to it. And other than that, I love this community. My daughter just graduated, she just walked this year, so she's getting ready to go to college. And we're, we're proud to be a part of this community. I mean, we, I wouldn't wanna live anywhere else. You guys have been great to us, you guys have helped my wife out when she went into a coma. You guys were there for me, and you guys have always been there for my family. Just little things, just, I want to see addressed, so, other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to address the council? Moving on to the second agenda. Pleasantly counsel. Counsel? Make a motion to approve the intended.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion, or we have a motion to approve the minutes and second. Any further discussion? All the papers?
Aye, aye.
All the votes? So we can have this. Moving on to information, according to the city manager's report. First, I'll call up Nick Bailey, who's going to do the presentation for us this evening.
I'm the mayor's counsel. I'm here to present this year's check to the Warriors for Freedom Foundation for our Warrior Weekend. And it was a telephone that's kinda seems to be feeding you on with the Warriors and R U. So, at this time, we're gonna invite someone, one of our nation's heroes, Mr. Derek Jones, for freedom, to tell you a little bit about what they did and what this was up to.
Gentlemen, thank you for allowing us to kind of have a few minutes of your time this evening. My name is Derek Jones, I'm the director of development for the Warriors Freedom Foundation. Before that, I was a ten-year combat veteran for the Iraq War. I was a Green Army first woman, did a couple tours in Iraq. Best job I ever had, changed it, however. But however, when I came back, I came back, I'll say broken, confused, had a lot of low points in life. And I found Warriors Freedom Foundation around that time, in my second year that I transitioned out of the military. Transition is difficult, and that's the way it is for a lot of my other programs as vets, that we get out of the military. Without being prepared for this, you know, adolescent, whole life in the military. So Warriors Freedom Foundation, in a nutshell, what we do is take veterans and active duty members, mostly veterans that are transitioning out of the military, and take them on recreational outings, events, golf recreational therapy, golfing, hunting, fishing, shooting events, things of that nature. Kind of disguise that as a way to rebuild the camaraderie that may have been lost during active experience. This year, seventh year of the Mustang Warrior Weekend, I mean, you guys just, your council, the way you guys approve things, your community gets the hindless, and does so much to help our foundation. And just continues to develop, we for, just continues to build. And Nick Bailey and his team are amazing individuals, not one, not just for the work they do, but for the compassion that you have for vets, which I appreciate them, and the compassion we have for individuals that are suffering from disabilities, whether it's physical or mental, and our foundation. So, Mustang is a serious, serious source for us, is a charity of choice that continues to help veterans in hopelessness in the Walnut area. We really appreciate everything that your community does for us. So, is that the team you was talking about, there's a few of them here tonight that they wanna come on up? Ashley, Shannon, this is Blake, Chris. Gene's over here. So, this year was similar to last year, we had a new softball, a new baseball tournament, a five K and a pistol tournament. Unfortunately, the baseball and softball event got rained out. Sometimes it's a good problem to have when you have a bunch of teams here. A lot of these tournaments will cancel Friday or Saturday, and they'll go on like Sunday. We had an issue with two teams not able to play on Sunday, and nobody didn't wanna not play. So, we just didn't have enough. not play, so we just didn't have enough time today to play it. So, the Mustang New Sports Association decided we had to wrap it up, and we put them out all week long, the next week, which again, we lost two days to rain during that week. And then they decided the next weekend's tournament, they were gonna go ahead and donate the profits, uh, from that, again, it would shorten the day because of raining. But, uh, so that's kind of the down news on this particular year. The up news is, is that the five K, which these four are in charge of, the first year we had forty-two runners, this year we had a hundred and seven. So, that's fantastic, a lot of people coming out. And there's plenty of guys here with the disc golf, but they went from thirty-nine players to seventy-eight players this year. And then, see, well, some guys, troops, they're out there in the mud, I mean, their water standing all over the place, they come back and they've got mud up to their knees, and they were just thrilled to be out there playing for such a great cause. So, uh, with all that said, I'm going to present supporters for freedom, or the check for eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Good job.
Nice.
Good job.
Thank you. And Nick, just, I've been involved with this for seven years, dude.
Yep.
And you need to, everybody needs to know, kids, this is the biggest weekend of the year, it's always like, for people, they can love that weekend, and dress up, it's just, you guys do a great job.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Can I say something real quick? Um, being a veteran myself, that takes me an hour, but I just wanted to say, uh, Councilman McKenzie and myself, uh, it, it really is here, so thank you for everything you do for our residents, uh, these lots of men.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I, I served eight years in the, in the Army, so that's pretty honorable there.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, the city Mustang was recently notified that the comprehensive annual financial audit report, uh, that's referred to as a CAPR, uh, for fiscal year ending two thousand eighteen, not nineteen, qualified for our GFPA certificate of achievement, excellence in financial reporting. And that certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition of governmental accounting and financial recording, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And, um, it, it's not dismanagement, it would be dismanagement that it, that it recognizes. And Janet does a great job, uh, as you are aware, we have a budget a little bit later on this evening, uh, at keeping us on track and not over budget and within, within our boundaries, and then making sure everything's recorded properly relies, uh, lies on not only Janet, but the rest of her staff. And, um, Tammy, and Andrea, and Robin, and Angela, all do a phenomenal job, and we can't thank them enough for this. So, this is the, this is the seventh year, but, uh, oh, on this flag, but how many is it overall? Twenty-five years in a row, um, that they, that they get this. So, it's, it's really an accomplishment. Do you wanna say anything to her? She, she loves to talk.
We know that.
I just wanted to express my appreciation for this, um, these ladies do probably two to three positions each, and, um, this award for the CAPR, there's only a handful in the city for the state of Oklahoma that receives this award, and so I have this up to all of them.
Any else sitting down here?
Nothing else besides a bit.
Uh, council reports, word six.
Um, you asked for it. Yes, you did, I was ready for it. Uh, I had, uh, one of my board members come to me, uh, earlier this week over drainage issues on Morton Road, um, since it's a hassle and we're getting it, uh, worked, so, and that's all I have for my.
Good job. Word five?
Yep.
Word four?
Word four is asking for drainage issues, the city manager, Justin Tucker, quit.
Word three?
Um, only thing that I would throw out there is, I found out today, the, the Mustang Chamber is up. Okay. At the next Mustang Chamber luncheon on June the twenty-seventh, Governor Kevin Stitt will be here, and, you know, so they're asking the, the local communities to have a good turnout for it. I know that multiple chambers are coming together that day for that luncheon, so, just encourage everybody to support and show up.
Word two, sir?
I was contacted about an issue that I don't know what, where to go with it, so I'm asking, uh, since I'm on the traffic commission, an issue which may have been addressed, uh, by the council previously, and that is the road that goes to Mustang Elementary, the road straight south of McDonald's. I did a survey there one day during school, the problem does not exist now since school's out, but from two ten to two forty, I witnessed enough, over twenty-five cars that were eastbound, one fifty-two that had backed up to Walgreen, and then in the center of turn lane, westbound, there was fifteen cars. Now, we're talking about Highway four, one fifty-two here. My question is, since I'm on the traffic commission, do I call a meeting, or who do I contact to call a meeting?
You would contact Melissa Helschel, she is the one who, she is the staff representation on that committee, and that would be an item that you can bring up at that meeting, at the traffic commission.
Thank you.
Any else to speak?
No, that's it, thank you.
Word one?
I would like to say that everything is great in word one, however, I would like to say that we know that Ms. Martin is out due to surgery, and she's watching, I just wanna let her know that she is missed, and she is in our prayers, looking forward to coming back soon, so.
Well done, sir.
Thank you.
Very kind, I hope she's watching.
You really think she is?
No.
Yeah.
But I can say that I miss her.
She doesn't have Fox cables, she says. Uh, I have, I haven't received many phone calls, some for thanksgiving, sorry, a lot of them show up in my office.
Really? Well, they did call me?
Yep, they did, they did, they give me any report. Uh, I have nothing to report. Uh, oh, I do wanna remind everybody this will have to be July or June twenty-ninth, what's it called?
Freedom Vets.
Freedom Vets. Freedom Vet, I think the tickets, I read in the city manager's report, five dollars?
Yes.
Five dollars for fireworks, uh, and also this is the, 'tis the season, uh, please be mindful of our neighbors on fireworks, be mindful of the hours that we're allowed to do it, and, uh, you know, communicate to your neighbors, make sure that you're not, uh, violating their space if there's people that have struggled on it, be a good neighbor, that's all we ask.
And, and I failed to put it in the city manager's report, but we still have signs available for, um, any of those veterans or service members that have sensitivity to, um, fireworks and, and noise from them, that we can put those signs in their yards so that their neighbors know and, and it calls out to them to be able to, um, consider.
Thank you, sir.
Those are free at City Hall, and I believe we have them also at the Red Center as well.
Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion items. Uh, number one, public hearing, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, the annual budget for the city of Mustang, Mustang Improvement Authority and Related Funds, the reports with the state statutes.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, um, first, uh, before we get to the PowerPoint, I'm just gonna hit some highlights about the budget. Our projected sales tax revenue for the upcoming year is at four percent. Um, different changes from this year's budget, from the current fiscal year's budget to the next year's budget include, um, some changes, uh, in adding a school resource officer and, um, staffing a adequate fire and emergency response grant, which we did, uh, last year, and it continues into this year and the following year. Uh, also an amendment regarding, um, the city attorney's contract is included in this budget, step increases for all eligible full-time employees, um, fraternal warrior police employees would receive a one percent COLA, and, uh, on July one, and then an additional one percent COLA on January first, two thousand twenty. Um, our healthcare premium cost went down fifteen percent, which is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar savings to the city. Uh, no changes to our, our pension, uh, percentage contribution for O M R F and FOP and I M T. And then, um, different amounts of improvements, and street improvements, capital improvements, and our Mustang Improvement Fund, which we'll get to as we go through the actual presentation. There you will see, um, our general fund budget, our projected, uh, beginning balance is two million, five hundred thousand, and our projected fund balance at the close of the fiscal year is two billion, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. We're using, uh, about one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and change to balance the budget from the reserves, and that represents less than point four, what was it? Point five-three percent of our reserve budget. Um, our reserves, we try to keep between ten and fifteen percent. Um, when I started here in Mustang, our reserves were point two percent. Um, so, our reserves now are healthy, are quite healthy, and I saw the fourteen percent, I believe, in the funds, even with using that reserve. We talk about our revenue, we projected a four percent decrease in our sales tax, and we, uh, we have a reserve averaging thirteen percent in the current fiscal year, and we, we expect new housing starts, uh, to exceed, um, that current year as well. Uh, there you'll see the expenditures by percentage through department, which you will all see in these graphs at the work session, and then the different, uh, changes are some of the things that I reviewed, um, before we start the PowerPoint presentation. There you can see, if you can read it, all the different governmental funds, um, Janet, during our work session, you might recall, Janet went through all of these funds one at a time and fielded several different questions on them. Nothing has changed from the presentation that you had at the work session. Our limited purpose fund, uh, funds different capital projects, those are listed over there on, on the board to the left, and I think they follow in this presentation as well. Yes, they do. So, all of those items, um, will be funded in this next fiscal year. And that total request is over, uh, it's one point four million dollars of capital out there this year. Our enterprise funds, um, again, no changes there from the work session that you had, um, and they're all pretty much self-explanatory. I don't wanna say, read PowerPoints to you, I, I feel that that insults you, so I don't do that. Mustang Improvement Authority, uh, moving to the MIA, again, our projected beginning balance at three million, and our projected ending fund balance is also at three million. And then you see our revenues and our expenditures in the MIA. Again, no changes from the budget work session. In conclusion of the presentation, I can't thank you, um, I get a lot of, this is, I get a lot of credit for the budget, but I can tell you, my involvement in it, um, is not nearly that of what, uh, Ms. Watts does, and I can't say enough about her and her team of people that put that budget together every year. Um, we know when we start the budget, um, it's going to be difficult, and we struggle at times when we get through that process, and there could, sometimes, uh, there are raised voices, um, but for the most part, um, we get to a point where, um, you have a bound, a, a budget tonight that is for all intents and purposes of this budget, and, um, I'm proud of that. Okay. Oh, sorry, one more thing, the budget has been available, the proposed budget has been available on the city's website, copies have been available at the library, uh, since we delivered it to the council. The questions that came up during the work session, and, and we had one question submitted after that work session, that, that question, those questions and those answers are also on the website, and the PowerPoint that was used in the work session is on the website, as was the PowerPoint we just made.
I'll entertain a motion, or I'll declare a, a public hearing, I prefer to have a motion open to public hearing.
Thank you, motion to open the public hearing on the budget?
Good second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? At this time, public hearing is open, if there's anybody who'd care to address the council or staff regarding the budget. Uh, seeing that there's none, then I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close there.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Moving on to item two, discussing consideration of possible action regarding resolution number nineteen dash zero forty-one, approving the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget for the city of Mustang, Mustang Improvement Authority and Related Funds. Is there any questions to staff? I would hope that everybody's already had those questions answered. If none, then I would entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the resolution number one time.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Please use your ticker. End of passing items. Moving on to item number three, discussion consideration of possible action regarding resolution number nineteen dash zero thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing participation in the O M A G recognition program.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the O M A G, uh, recognition program is available to member communities that utilize O M A G for our liability protection plan, and as you are aware, there are different steps that you can go through to get a refund in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred dollars, uh, from O M A G. One of those was to adopt a handbook, which you did, I believe, two meetings, two or three meetings ago, one was to, um, receive the O M A G training, which we did, um, in May, and then also to, uh, complete and review a stability test, which we've also done, and then, um, review the city municipal liability protection plan. The final step in this process is to adopt this resolution, and once this resolution is adopted, um, we will be, we will be receiving a refund in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred dollars, and they will come and present that check at a council meeting.
Is there any questions, comments from staff, or from, uh, council?
One hundred, I had Lisa, uh, worked very hard on this, it's a shame she can't be here tonight to see this pass, but hopefully she will be here when the check is delivered, which is probably the more important, I, than, than all the others.
Make a motion to approve resolution. Uh, before you make the motion, uh, I just wanna say that, and I've shared this with the city manager and I, and, and with Lisa and the city city manager. Some, for, for a lot of you guys, it was first workshop type of event they've had this, for the six years I've been on this council, that was truly the most informational, uplifting seminar, meeting, whatever you wanna call it. I learned more in that two or three hours, uh, than anything I've ever gone to, but it was informative, and I really enjoyed it, and I'm sure that you, we all read the email that was sent out on how, how we scored.
Yes.
That is a credit to, to, to the city manager and the staff here. We, we basically, as a council, we said, "These people rock on solid," and we did, we, we were, we're doing a good job, and they're doing a good job. I just need to throw that in. Okay, I'm sorry, Brian.
Make a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash zero thirty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. Passing items. Moving on to number four, discussion consideration of possible action regarding renewing contract for maintenance and operations of public streets and willing and maintenance of public parts of facilities with Silver Star Construction Company.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. Uh, before you as a renewal with Silver Star Construction, at this time, uh, further contract on Southwest CPI, Consumer Product Index, uh, that's, they're asking for the two point four percent increase, um, that equates to seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, six hundred and thirteen cents, and six, excuse me, six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, it's a background indication, um, I, but I, I wanna reiterate, and it kinda goes without saying, uh, Silver Star Construction does a great job to the city of Mustang, they're always very quick, they're very responsive, and one of the things that I love is... And one of the things that I love is, although our contract spells out very clearly what they're to do, we never... They never call and say, "Well, that's not in our contract." Trash on the side of the road is not in the contract, but they'll pick it up. Concrete busted up on someone's sidewalk, they don't have to remove it, they do those things. So I think it's pretty obvious, the first five years of their contract, there was no CPI increase at all. For those that were here during that time. And then each renewal, they have the option on the Southwest CPI, which is 2.4%. So even though you see the new number of 790, that's just up from 772,000 last year. So if there's any questions down there, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions to staff? It's a safe to assume that they're just great partners for this city.
Absolutely. And I would go so far as to say their employees treat it like it's their city.
Good. That's who we need for us. I was talking with him, Justin, earlier, and one of the things that impressed me, a few years ago, I was working in a three-way stop within a neighborhood in my ward. And I remember in the traffic vision, we had to ask Melissa after it passed and everything like that. I asked Melissa how long it would take for it to go up. And I couldn't remember if she said a week or 30 days or something. It was something like that. And it was either up that afternoon or like the next morning. And the reason that I knew that it was up was because I had somebody call me and say, "Hey, why is there a stop sign happening?" And I explained to him why. I was very impressed.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, staff, comments? I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the renewal of the agreement with Silver Star Construction Company for an additional three-year current be approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Passing unanimous. Moving on to item number five. Discussion consideration of possible action regarding preliminary plat application CP 1212-18-1-35, Science Commercial Park Phase 2, Robin Sykes Northeast Quarter, Section 35.9.66 acres, 9.66 acres, eight lots.
Thank you, everyone. This is an application for a preliminary plat for a commercially zoned area that is just south of where the new hotel is. This area has been split several times in lot splits. But the developer was told if you're going to split it anymore, you really do need a plat. So they've come forward with a plat. And they are looking at eight commercial lots. It's 9.66 acres, so about one acre per lot is on C5. And they will extend the road to the south. And they will extend water and sewer service to those lots as well. Lots meet the size requirements for C5. The water, sewer, and drainage and paving plans have all been reviewed by our city engineer and approved. And that report is in the packet. The fire department reviewed this plat as well and made some suggestions. And those suggestions have been made in the New York, we know it's version of the plat. City attorney also made some comments. Those comments have all been addressed. There was one more comment that we found where we asked the engineer to change the wording on the common access easement to common access driveway. And they agreed to make that change. This is a commercial and residential area. There is residentially zoned property to the south and to the east. Wherever there is residentially zoned property that abuts this preliminary plat, when they develop or raise their events, they require a long-range plan. The long-range plan calls for regional retail development areas. So it does meet the recommendations of the conference plan. They will again have water, sewer, and public streets. Staff recommends approval. The fire, warming, city engineer, staff, and city attorney have reviewed it. They commissioned, heard this at the May 14 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Any questions?
The engineer is here if you have any questions for him.
You got any questions for the engineer?
What kind of commercial bids?
Well, if you look in your COBLO and look under the table, limited uses, you look up the C5 uses, those are the used. You don't know that they specifically have reasons to have it.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion?
I move that the preliminary plat for Science Commercial Park Phase 2 be approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Passing unanimous. Moving on to item six. Discussion consideration of possible action regarding acceptance of aid. Acceptance of bids for project labeled Loud Horse Park Splash Pad Water and Sewer Line. Hoorah!
Yes, sir. I think we should do you the honor of being the first one in, Mr. Mayor, maybe?
I'm glad to, sir. Thank you.
Nobody wants to see that.
Probably not.
I agree.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But before you... We, the council and engineering in the City of Mustang, put out specifications for a water and sewer line that will actually service the entire area over there on the five new playgrounds. That's Splash Pad. The current playground will actually help assess with the irrigation. And then there'll be some future development. In those specifications, we put out a singular engineering plan with an addendum. So we actually had two bids. So what you see in front of you is a base bid and an alternate one. After getting the bids in and looking at the budget, we felt it was our best approach to go with the base bid. And what that does in this project essentially completes half the water line and the entire sewer line. When we construct the market, which you can remember was part of the 2016 bond issue, we'll complete the water line. We were a little hesitant on our existing plans, because if the footprint for any future construction changed, then we would have to go back and move the water line that we just built. We didn't want that. So ODQ regulated that, gave us plans, gave us the go-ahead that we can partially do that line. So you have before you the four bids that we received. And at this time, what we would recommend is to only award the low base bid to the low contractor.
Please understand first, there's two portions to this bid or to this item. First one is we will be going to accept all the bids. That's the first. And then the second one is the awarding of the lowest to the lowest bid. So is there any questions to staff?
One. Is this deal going to include that escape park? Or is that something that we pushed out with that? What would be the escape area or the...
No, sir. Don't believe I'm at it. We've never stoked that out with the architect, and the escape park was part of 2016. We've had talks about that in the past and looked at different areas, but there's currently no area dedicated to it.
Any other questions to staff? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the bids.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. All bids been accepted on awarding the lowest qualified bid for project labeled Loud Horse Splash Pad Water and Sewer Line. Entertain a motion?
Good day to the Congressmen, Mr. Mayor. We do recommend the lowest base bid of Craft Reynolds. And if we could, if you'd mind, because there was two motions and it wasn't a practical problem, you can do a roll call on this.
On the left... On this one?
Yes, sir. Just because I noticed there was a slide seven.
We'll blame it on... Again. All right, we'll do a roll call on this one. Motion stays the same, correct?
Yeah.
If you would, please say the... Who we awarded to Craft Reynolds Construction, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's Craft Reynolds Construction. Do you agree with me, Attorney? All right. Thank you. Roll call, please. Well, we have... All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Redd. Councilman Tippel.
Yes.
Councilman Reider.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman McKenzie. Councilman Sholen.
Yes.
Councilman... Or Mayor Shulmer.
Yes.
And Justin, I guess six years ago, you told me, says there's something that you're passionate about, you want to take the lead on. What did I tell you six years ago, sir?
Splash Pad.
Thank you, sir.
And we got word last week that the actual Splash Pad contractor was awarded a lot back ago, if you remember. We're glad we onside with that next week ahead.
All right. If you don't mind, please, I'm going to put it on hold before we go on to item seven. City manager has something he'd like to do.
Justin, we need to help Edgar. Under my report, I forgot to introduce, we have a visitor from Kenya here tonight. Edgar, our intern, if you can hear a lot. His mother is here visiting from Kenya tonight. And her name is Janet. And I just wanted to introduce her. I think it's pretty safe to say you've traveled the farthest to any city council in America. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your son so much. He really does.
Mayor, you have a fine son, too. I'm sure you've been told that many a times. Moving on to item seven. Skipper, I'm going to let you roll with this one first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Discussion consideration of possible action on request with the City of Oklahoma City to enter into agreements with the City of Mustang, under which Mustang will provide water and sewer services and police and fire protective services to an area lying south of the City of Mustang and within the municipal limits of the City of Oklahoma City. Mr. Mayor, council members, this matter relates to subtractive land lying south of the Mustang city limits along State Highway 4 on either side. It's an area where a local developer has wanted to develop it for some period of time. In 2015, he petitioned the City of Oklahoma City to de-anex the area from their city limits. And ultimately, the City of Oklahoma City declined the request to de-anex. The developer filed a lawsuit against the City of Oklahoma City, and that is currently pending in Oklahoma County Court. In conjunction with that, the City of Oklahoma City has made a request to the City of Mustang. The City of Mustang agreed to enter into agreements with the City of Oklahoma City under which the City of Mustang would provide sewer services to this area south of the City of Mustang and along the Highway 4 corridor. And also provide water services as well as police and fire protection. And that is before the city council today. The forms of the agreements are not before you because those have not been worked out. It will take some time until the judge sees those in the city council in case. But they would like to proceed forward with those agreements. But rather than spend the time and to do that beforehand, I thought it was most appropriate to get it before the council and see what your direction is.
Is there any questions to staff? And before you make a bunch of questions, what I would like to kind of leave the council and inform the council. What is in front of us today is not the what is, what are they going to build there? What is it going to be zoned? What is this? What is that? It's whether or not we, as a city, as a council, are interested in selling Oklahoma City our services, being water, sewage, police, and fire. Those are the questions that are in front of us right now as a council, or are we willing to do that, take that on as a customer? So with that... With me making that statement, does anybody have any questions to staff, being the city attorney at this point, relating to those four issues?
Is that before the deannexation or...
That's it.
Let me say that the deannexation right now is not an issue in court of council. But and I don't know exactly what the City of Oklahoma City is anticipating or proposing. The issue of whether or not the City of Oklahoma City will deannex will ultimately be decided in that court proceeding or through some settlement. But as part of their contemplation, the City of Oklahoma City has reached out to the City of Mustang to see whether or not they will be willing to provide these services.
Is there a number? Even if you can, we discuss the number of...
What do you mean by the number?
As far as what we're charging those services.
No, we wouldn't know what that is. And the financial impact, we have no idea what it's going to be. We have no idea what we're going to charge. I would go ahead and speak my mind, just so the council hears me say it. We have 12 square miles of responsibility. Some 20, some 28,000 people here that we responsible for. And I don't think we're in a position, nor do we need to entertain taking on a third customer then. We don't need that customer right now. We need to take care of our house, unlike many other work. I'm not interested in going into any kind of agreement with the City of Oklahoma City at this time relating to fire, police, water, and sewage until we get... We're all good to go in town. So with that being said, I'm welcome to afford anybody else.
All right. I agree with you.
Keith?
My question is, is the question here, do we want to sell a service? Is that correct?
Correct. We want to provide the water and the sewage and the police and the fire to this development south of Mustang.
For a profit.
We... You would think, you would hope that you'd profit, but you just don't know until you get into the middle of it.
Then why wouldn't the Mus... City of Mustang want to enter into a business agreement to make money?
It's going to be very hard to make money on water when we buy as much water as we do from Oklahoma City already. That's something you've got to keep in mind. We buy tremendous amount of water from Oklahoma City.
I understand that.
And in order to try to offset what we pay for them, it will affect what happens to the people in the City of Mustang. If we go into an agreement with Oklahoma City and just say, "Okay, we're going to do this, and we're going to try to make profit on that," it will affect... It will affect citizens of Mustang on their utility bills, water, and sewage, more than what it is right now. I would assume none of us know what the financial impact could be.
So you're assuming it will. Aren't we going to enter into a new contract with Oklahoma City on the water?
We just ended it. We just did one last...
Thirty-year debt.
Yeah, we just went into that was on the last meeting. We wanted to agree with the City of Oklahoma City.
So if this went into effect, you could not section out at least two square miles and say, "We will sell you water with a surcharge on it over what we pay Oklahoma City." Is that correct? You could not do that?
No, you very well could. You very well could.
The issue, though, I guess the way I look at the issue, sir, is not just the water and sewer, but the police and fire protection, the costs involved in that as well. You can't charge that or on a utility bill above what you would charge your own residents. Not to mention, if this develops, any of the material that is being built there, any homes being built, we don't get any sales tax on that. There's no property tax coming off of that. We get nothing. And that can't be part of the agreement.
So the only revenue that we would get would be from the sale of water?
Or sewer, maybe. Maybe, yeah.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Mayor then.
That's where I struggle with. I don't see what the benefit would be to us.
The median... The first gut feeling to me is there's no benefit for us to deal with this. We're not in a position to take on some of this.
At this point, this is not even on...
Thank you. Exactly. Any other questions, comments? I will then entertain a motion.
Make a motion to deny?
I'd say a motion.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please cast your vote.
And just a reminder, since the motion is to deny, you vote yes, that means you're in agreement to deny. You vote no, that means we're obviously...
I think I follow that. First press two, so.
Wrong, I don't think.
The passage has been denied. Moving on to the city attorney's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. We have a number of things denied at the city attorney's report tonight. First, discussion consideration of possible action regarding potential purchase and acceptance of permanent and temporary easements and authorization for mayor city staff to execute necessary documents to the...
and authorization for mayor city staff to execute necessary documents to the county. This is proposed for executive session. It's authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven v. three. Number two, discussion, consideration, and possible action of the city of Mustang versus Lorna Smith et al. This is a case pending in the District Court of the Canadian County. This is proposed for executive session. It's authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven v. four. Third, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the city of Mustang versus Martha Mordison. Case number CB twenty nineteen fifty-two, District Court of the Canadian County, Oklahoma. This, too, is proposed for executive session. It's authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven v. four. Finally, discussion on the city of Mustang versus Purdy Farma et al., case number CB nineteen three thirty-nine R., United States District Court, District of Oklahoma. This is also proposed for executive session. It's authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven v. four. With regard to those litigation matters that are currently pending, it's my recommendation that the city council go into executive session in order to protect the interest of the city.
Motion to go into executive session, please.
We have a motion and a second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's been a month old, Brian?
Yep, yesterday, yeah.
Is that?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'll be interrupting.
So that executive session, it could last for a couple hours. I wasn't going to wait around for the vote to reimburse me the hundred and sixty-four dollars. But anyway. Thank you for all attending with me. Next time I address city council, Mustang city council will be for a completely different reason. Thanks, guys. I will be calling the city manager tomorrow. As you saw, he was writing, oh, you guys probably didn't see, because I wasn't holding my camera up. He was writing down all the numbers that I gave them for the excessive fees that were charged. And so hopefully I'll be reimbursed a whole lot more of those. Sorry, guys, trying to get into my truck. I'm going to switch my camera around. There we go. But anyway. It's not going to stop there, guys. Let everybody know, I've decided to go ahead and enroll into law school and get my law degree. And I'm really, really looking forward to that. I've already, already have my prerequisites, prerequisites out of the way. So I don't have eight years of college I have to go through. I can go and apply directly to start my criminal justice studies, which is great. And then start attending law school. So that's what I plan on doing. And my practice is going to entail civil rights and solely civil rights cases. I plan on completing the school based off the criteria that's been set forth to me by my counselor, my student counselor. I can get this knocked out in three years. I know that sounds like a long time, but to me, that's not, not very long at all. So I intend on helping anybody and everybody out there that, because I'm going to, what I'm going to be practicing, it'll be in federal court. Therefore, I will be able to practice anywhere in the country. So, and that's to help our cause. I see that that's going to be the best route for me to take to get some real changes done. So that's what I plan on doing. And I can actually start in August, on August twelfth, is when my first, first class is. So I don't think they're going to allow me to record, though. That'd be pretty cool, though. That way, everybody can go to class with me and learn, and that'd be awesome. I know, let me talk to my teachers. Doesn't mean you guys can do my homework for me, though. I got to do that on my own. But anyway, so that's it, guys. Thanks for watching. I got more updates coming soon, and I can't.